19, this is a study session of the Prescott City Council. We're going to call this meeting to order. Let's please call roll.
Mayor Mangarelli.
Present.
Mayor Protem Orr.
Here.
Councilwoman Blair.
Yes.
Councilwoman Good.
Here.
Councilwoman Amerson.
Here.
Councilwoman Scholl.
Here.
Councilwoman Sishka.
Here.
All are present.
Thank you for that. Welcome, everybody. Good to see you all on a beautiful Prescott afternoon. We have two items today. Please grab a comment card if you would like to make comment during public comment. And we'll get started with item 3A.
Presentation by Public Works on the Capital Improvement Program status.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Craig Dotseth and Tim Sherwood from Public Works here. So, we're here to talk about FY19.
Is that on?
Is that on?
Craig?
Maybe I need to touch it.
Oh, there you go. And maybe we can turn it up, too. If there's somebody that can turn it up for us. Where's Woodfield?
I'll just make sure that I stay closer to it.
Sorry about that. Thanks, Craig.
Okay. So, we're here to talk about FY19 projects that have been completed, are ongoing, and/or getting close to beginning in FY20, kind of where the year kind of shook out. So, this is part of our list of projects completed. So, as you're all aware of, Carlton Cortez right out here. Then there was Drainage Improvement Projects, bid package number one. We had it labeled as did work on Alarcan, Goldenrod, and Divinity. Drainage Improvement Projects, bid package number two, then did Boardwalk, Thumbbutte, and Country Club. So, Gail Gardner pavement rehab and chip seal. That took care of Gail Gardner from Iron Springs Road to Fair. And that was a kind of a project just to hold it together and give us a number of years of life expectancy before it has to be full reconstruction there. The Granite Creek Dam Outlet Rehabilitation was completed. Montezuma and Sheldon Sewer Relocation. Mingus Douglas Lift Station abandonments. North Washington and Churchill Reconstruction. That was total reconstruction from Sheldon to Churchill and then over to Arizona. Rossar Street Reconstruction Phase Four. Went from Campbell, past Laurel Lane, down into the Eagle Ridge area. Senator Highway Slope Stabilization. That was a little project that no one would have ever known it was needed or that had happened. It's actually on the side of Senator Highway between City Lights and Juniper. And the entire side of the road slope was being washed away and hidden from all of Then, we did the State Route 89 pavement rehabilitation and chip seal from Willow Lake Road to the Fippen Roundabout. Sun Dog Trunk Main, Phase C1. That was in conjunction with the Creekview Apartments over on Miller Valley Road. Sun Dog Wastewater Treatment Plant Lift Station, right in the treatment plant site itself. Virginia Street pavement improvements was from Gurley Street to Willis, where we'd had numerous water main breaks. We reconstructed that in there. And you have Byheals Drainage Improvements. Installed three cross drains on Hornet Drive, where there were significant flooding challenges last year that were identified. And the Zone 5676 Pump Station upgrade. So, that completely reconstructed both of those pump stations. That is right on Heather Heights off of Highway 69. So, it'll take care of the 69 corridor and Prescott Resort in there. Continuing into trip hazard elimination. So, I've mentioned before that we did 487 locations. And what I didn't remember is that we had embarked on an earlier process also around before Halloween, because we had a number of them identified on Mount Vernon. So, we did 290-some then also. So, we did a total of 785 trip hazard locations. Then, the FY19 Sidewalk Repairs was done in various locations. FY19 Pavement Preservation with the rejuvenator. We did an equivalent of 23.6 miles of lane miles of roadway with the rejuvenator. Then, also on the preservation side, the crack seal. Our crack seal contract purchased and put down the application of 460,000 pounds of crack seal material. That's like three to four times what we've been doing in previous years. So, that contract was a huge benefit. And then ultimately pavement rehabilitation on Willow Creek Road from Mitchell to Green Lane, and then Gail Gardner from Iron Springs to Willow Creek Road. So, these are all projects. And like quite a few of those, you know, they're at various locations. These are all just labeled as an individual project and all completed during FY19.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Craig gave you some of the details. I'll get to show you some of the pretty pictures. As you can see, this is Carlton Street looking west towards Montezuma. And as you can see in the upper left-hand corner, that is a 1937-38 era WPA concrete street. Served the city very well for a very long time. In the lower right-hand corner, you can see the new pavement and the striped parking spaces. We gained a handful of parking spaces on Carlton, primarily down by Mile Hall Middle School. There were no striped spaces in that vicinity at the time. We kind of held our own on Carlton between Cortez and Montezuma. And this is just an opposite look, looking back up the street. You can see where an old water main was installed in the street, in the old patch there. The manhole you see in the lower picture on the new one is a new storm drain manhole. And there were some complications as far as getting the storm drain through the intersection, because it was fairly deep through there. Sewer is 15 feet deep, plus trying to thread a storm drain through there. New water, new gas mains. And we improved the storm drain capability of that area as well. Right out in front of the building here, Cortez, you can see the condition of the existing pavement on Cortez. It was deteriorating for quite a number of years. And then, the upper left-hand corner of the picture, you can see where there was a car parked parallel. Just coincidence, the same red cars in both pictures. But the cars parked parallel in front of the legal building, and now those spaces right there are all angled spaces. And we added the angled spaces in front of City Hall. We've gotten some very good feedback from people visiting City Hall and also employees here in the building about doing that. This was just a little highlight. You can see how we kind of enhanced the entry into the alley. The old curb was kind of offset from the pole. You can see all the dip signs leaning and stuff like that. So, it's apparent somebody hit it before. So, we were able to protect the pole. And then, it's hard to see in the picture, but right behind the new lamp or the existing lamppost there is one of the WPA stamps that were actually in Carlton at the time. We've gone to some measures to saw cut those out and then place them somewhere in the parkway where they can still be visible and kind of give some little bit of history of what was there before we got started. As Craig mentioned, Drainage Bid Packet Number One. These projects kind of stem from primarily drainage calls that we get into the city. And then, our crews go out and investigate and kind of prioritize what are some of the worst situations. You can see the top of the Alarcan Alley. We had a lot of problems with storm runoff on the slope going down the alley. We replaced the alley with a concrete, completely with concrete, matched all the existing driveways, and it functions much better. This is out near the Pinion Oaks area on Goldenrod. Goldenrod makes a 90-degree turn. You can see how the water coming off the street eroded completely, basically washed out what was there previously. Inserted the concrete spillway, improved the rip wrap, put a safety rail there for the public so there wouldn't be a hazard there. Drainage Bid Packet Two, which we did later on in the year. Boardwalk, we typically had some problems in this area in the past. You can see the kind of smaller catch basin that's there in the previous picture. We installed two catch basins on each end of the existing spillway. Did some new pavement up along the street there, improved the sidewalks and the curb and gutter as well. This is up on Thumbbutte Road, up near Apollo. We did some improvements to Thumbbutte a few years ago. Apollo has a lot of sheet flow that comes off it. And the houses that were on the opposite side of the street were encountering a lot of sheet flow that come off and flow into their yards. So, we installed a curb and gutter on their side of the street. We've had some really good feedback from the residents in that area as well. As part of our, we just did this project back in June, and part of the Gail Gardner project. Not a lot to show here, because it was primarily service stuff. But in the upper left-hand corner, you can see where we had some areas marked out to mill and replace some of the really damaged pavement. And then, we came in over the top of it and did a chip seal and a fog seal, and then restriped the entire street. And as Craig mentioned, that'll get us a few more years down the road. Every once in a while, we get to a project that's a little different, not the run-of-the-mill, put a new street in, put a new water main in. As many of you know, the Granite Creek Dam was built in 1919. And the valve in the upper left-hand corner was part of that construction. So, that valve has been there for 100 years. But that's what it did every day. It leaked water all the time. So, in the lower right-hand corner, you can see the new valves, the new valve and piping that was installed, as well as the safety access to get down to it. Previously, there was a small little ladder that kind of leaned up against a rock to access that valve. So, as you can see, it's much safer operation. Actually, the one thing the picture doesn't show, there's a tall chain link fence that goes around that concrete pad at the bottom, too, to protect, for fall protection. And in case you're wondering how we do that, barges. So, the work that was done on the outside of the dam had to be done on the inside of the dam as well. So, the barges are floated out. Dive crews were out there, worked in the water down at the dam. And as you can see, that's a fully loaded concrete mixer, getting backed up to the barge to pour concrete. So, like I said, every once in a while, we get to do something that's a little bit different. And there may not have been, there may be a handful of people in the city that didn't even know we did this project. Mingus Douglas Lift Station abandonment. We've had some projects in the last few years where we've tried to eliminate our lift stations whenever possible. So, we're able to convert the sewer in this area to gravity feed and eliminate the lift stations and the maintenance and everything that's associated with that. This is an alley that runs east and west between Mingus and Douglas. It's over in the Taylor Hicks area. And then, as part of that, too, we paved Campbell. Yeah, Campbell from, I'm drawing a blank on the streets, but out in front of Taylor Hicks School. Rossar Street was a project we completed early part of last summer, but into FY19. As you can see, the severely deteriorated pavement there. And then, we also eliminated the traffic calming meeting that was in the center and brand-new asphalt through there. And then, as part of that, too, we, there's a detention basin down at Campbell and Rossar that we increased the capacity. And we installed some new catch basins to capture water up both sides of the street and get in there and meter that water before it leaves. Project we just did back in June, kind of tied to the Gail Gardner project. And it was pretty extensive, but we all feel like it went very smoothly considering the corridor we were working in. It was a mill and overlay of the travel lanes from the Willow Lake Roundabout all the way out to where we tied into the Fippen Roundabout project. And then, we came in and chip sealed and fog sealed the entire length of that corridor. And once again, that's to get us some time to, the road was severely deteriorating, especially towards the north end, north of the old interchange, out near a couple of the old box culvers and stuff that were out there. So, you can kind of see the improved surface, upper left-hand corner, how much it's alligatored, and then how it looks in the right-hand corner. And then, this is through, right through the heart of the Dells there. And then, you can see as part of the project, too, we, I believe, Traffic Engineering looked at it. And you can see the new 45 mile an hour speed limit sign where there used to be a 50 mile an hour speed limit sign. Another project that was completed early last summer, our Sun Dogger wastewater treatment plant. Kind of wanted to show you guys, you know, the end product is what's up in the upper left-hand corner. The lower right-hand corner kind of shows you the scale of what had to take place to get there. That's a 24-inch pipe going into that manhole right there. And that's an excavator down in the bottom, doing the earthwork, as well as you can see how small the gentlemen that are working down there are. So, it was a quite complex project. This project is all part of our centralization, long-term projects. The Zone 5676 Pump Station is located at Heather Heights and Highway 69, down at the bottom of the hill below the resort. It used to be a small, 76 was in a small building, 56 was actually in a bunker. On the right is the new 76 Pump Station. You can see all the new hardware, more efficient pumps. And then, you can see the old building on the left, and the new building's on the right. The large roll-up door on the right is where the pump station and stuff is. The double doors on the left is where the new electrical room is. And then, as we talked about, the sidewalk trip hazard elimination project, we did 785 locations throughout the city. And what this was to do was to mitigate small trip hazards that we identified through the city, especially in the downtown area. It was a huge cost benefit and an impact to the downtown area. It was tremendously less significant, because we're not having to tear out entire sections of sidewalk in front of businesses and stuff like that. So, great value for the city. I think it was a great program. We got started last year. And then, when trip hazard elimination doesn't work, we replaced the sidewalks. As you can see, this is on Pleasant down near Moller. And the tree on the left had raised the sidewalk up significantly. So, we cleaned that whole area up, replaced that sidewalk there. In this instance, we had a sidewalk that dead-ended at Pleasant and Good Carlton. And so, we continued the sidewalk down, put a handicap ramp in there. This is on Goodwin near McCormick Street. And as you see, the sidewalk was severely lifted in that area. And then, we completely removed it and replaced it there. And then, two projects we finished late last summer were our two large pavement rehabilitation projects, which included Gail Gardner from Iron Springs to Willow Creek Road. We did most of that work at night. The impact to Walmart and the other businesses was pretty limited. And then, we did Willow Creek Road from Mitchell to Green Lane. And much like we did on the other end, we pretty much rolled into that project and did it 24/7 until we got it done to help eliminate some of the impacts to people that travel that corridor. So, that kind of wraps up what we did FY19. Projects we have that are currently under construction, and we're moving on. The Prescott Lakes Parkway Willow Lake Road Traffic Signal and Water Installation projects getting pretty close to wrapping up. The Robinson Drive project, the lower part of Robinson Drive from Gurley up to Butterfield is substantially complete. Unisource and APS had some third-party utility relocates to do. They're wrapping those up, and then we can move back into there. The Zone 16 Tank and Pump Station, involves a new pump station at the end of Virginia Street. Probably what everybody else is primarily familiar with is the work we've done on Hazely Road. It was closed for a significant amount of time over the winter and early spring. The Gurley-McCormick Water Main Replacement Project, that is getting close to wrapping up as well. We had a water main on Gurley that was problematic, to say the least. So, we've repaired that and extended it down McCormick to replace an old water main there. South Washington-Goodwin Improvements Project is ongoing. That should be substantially complete sometime towards the end of September. That's a full reconstruct, water sewer, curb gutter, some storm drain improvements on Goodwin Street. The Hillcrest Drainage Improvement Project is tied to the Robinson Drive project. They both kind of go together. The Hillcrest Drainage improvements tie into the storm drain stubout we left on Robinson Drive, and we have the same contractor for both contracts. Safer House to School on Coronado, that's an ADOT-administered project. It is ongoing now. I think the contractor is planning on being finished by mid-September. And that will be a new sidewalk on the north side of Coronado, all the way from Country Club, down to where we finished the Park Avenue improvements a few years ago. And the wastewater collection building installation is ongoing. That should be wrapping up fairly soon. That's exactly like it sounds like. There's an expansion to our current wastewater collection building to help those folks out. And we'll show you a few more pictures. This is the Prescott Lakes Parkway Willow Lake Road signal. Signal became operational weekend before last, as you can see, and striping. It's really, we've been getting some really good feedback. I've been trying to drive through it to see how it works and stuff like that, and it's been working really well. Robinson Drive, some of the improvements that we have done from Gurley, heading towards Butterfield. As you see, we had no sidewalk on the south side of Robinson Drive. That's been improved. Same thing going up. This would be between Stetson and Flato. As a user of those sidewalks, it's been a great improvement to the neighborhood. And this is looking at, from Flato, looking back towards Gurley, with the new valley gutter, curb and gutter improvements around the corner. You can see in the upper portion, there used to be a problem with water coming down there and eroding that corner out. Project that we, like I said, this is part of the greater Zone 16 project. We put a new 12-inch water main in Hazely from Senator Highway all the way to Valley Ranch Circle. And as part of the improvements, put new curb gutter, pavement, retaining walls. And there was no sidewalk in this area, so we added a sidewalk. We actually narrowed the road up a little bit and added a sidewalk to, I guess it would be the southeast side of the road, depending on where you're standing. Tremendous feedback from the neighborhood up there, as far as having the ability to walk down the road without having to worry about cars. This is another look at it up near the top, near Valley Ranch Circle. And this is kind of in the center, the low spot. And we used to have just some curb openings where water would drain off the side of the hill. We've installed some catch basins in this area to help improve with storm capture. That's all I've got for you.
Okay. So, with those projects that were completed, as well as then the ongoing, so with, there was a total of 21 projects completed. With that, through FY19, the total expenditures was over $38.6 million. And then, with the projects that are continuing, ongoing in there, that was another $10 million that was committed from the FY19 projects continuing the construction into '20. So, we're almost at $49 million with expenditures and committed.
I think it's important to thank the public for investing in the infrastructure going forward, because there's a lot of money that we just spent that's going to save millions of dollars into the future, Craig.
Absolutely.
At the end of the day, you know, when you think about it, we spent $38 million. But how much did we save by not allowing this continued deterioration of the infrastructure that we're trying to take care of in this town?
Absolutely. Good point. And for instance, with State Route 89, if we had not done the project that we did, that road was going to fall out from underneath all of us and have major expenditures needed.
Councilman Blair.
It's impressive to see this. As I drive around town, I would like you to comment. About 10 years ago, we entered into a program that had to do with using our millings on unpaved roads. And those things start falling apart after seven to 10 years. At the time, my understanding was when they started to fall apart, we would pave those as an active paving project. When are we going to start looking at those roads that severely need to be fixed? One of them is Delano, where the buses from Unified School District travel that road, from Northside to Campbell. And that road is always torn up, because it has millings on it. I don't know whether we need to go back and put oil back on top of those millings and rejuvenate them, but we have some issues with breakdown. And I just wondered, when Mr. Natupski was the Public Works Director, there was a comment that as those start failing, we would add each one of those roads into a full asphalt project.
And we are looking at those in with the entire preservation and/or reconstruction program. And definitely, the information that we're just received has been uploaded from the IMS, the company that did the laser evaluation of all our streets. That comes into play with that as well. So, it will be reviewed and considered with that.
I know some of them are still pretty good shape, but in particular, when you have bus traffic on it twice a day, five days a week on that milling street, it just doesn't work. I mean, not very well.
It's served us well, but it's time for additional.
Oh, no, it worked well for 10 years. So, I mean, we've kind of patched it up and don't have the asphalt or the AB and the grader and the material that we used to have. So, yes, it's been a benefit, but now it's time to look at at least those heavily traveled streets to add them back into a program.
Great. We can do that.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. Just really great work, Greg. I told you this yesterday when I was out at your office. Just appreciate all that your folks have done. Not only do we thank the public for their investment, but also for their patience, because there's been a lot torn up over the process. And it's all, seems like it's all coming to fruition right now. So, great work. I'd like to recognize Semple's part and Highway 89, as well as the city, the county, the state, all coming together, making that work, because you were right, it was about to fall out from under us. And thank you for your initiative on that. Appreciate it. And finally, definitely, thank you for the Willow Lakes and Prescott Lakes Parkway light that has made a tremendous difference. I like the way that it kind of channels people to where they need to go and works quite well. Walden Farms, you put up a temporary stop sign. That's really helped because of the added traffic out there right now. And same thing is at Trail Walk in Solstice. Thank you for those stop signs, that four-way. So, those are all good things that's happened, and just appreciate you stepping forward and doing it. So, really good work from your folks.
Thank you.
Councilman Sishka.
Thank you. Greg, I know there are a few people out there who feel like we're a poorly-run city, but I just want to say that you've done an incredible job.
Thank you.
This is what we, this is what we've always hoped for, and I hope that it continues into the future.
Absolutely. And I'm only one piece of the puzzle. Got an amazing team that works with me to, everybody make it happen.
Councilman Good.
Yeah, I want to commend you and your staff as well, Craig. I know I was a little bit critical a few years back when a lot of funds were allocated to these projects, and they weren't getting completed. They were over-engineered. They were extravagantly designed, causing really more problems than they solved. So, right sizing and doing the correct design and then getting the projects built, I think everyone sees that within the city. There's been a lot of inconvenience, but I think now that we're seeing some of these major projects get completed, as you said, Tim, the community and the neighborhoods that are involved are very appreciative of that. But this is not the end of it. We've got a lot more to go. We've got a lot of big construction projects. Some of these WPA concrete streets take a long, long time to excavate and then repair. I mean, God bless them, you know? 85 years ago, when they put these things in, those guys did a bang-up job, and they lasted a long, long time. But it's time for them to be improved, and I'm pretty confident in your team will do that well. Will you be mentioning the Lucity program at this presentation?
We sure can. We haven't. So, as I mentioned with IMS, that was the company that came in and did the laser evaluation of all of our pavement. So, now, we've received all of that information. It has been input into Lucity, which is our maintenance management and infrastructure management program. So, from that, now we're able to run models as far as looking at it each year, depending on the dollars for a capital improvement program to go towards preservation. And then, from that, it takes all of the data from the streets and identifies the need. So, it will call out what should be done, when, and where, in a systematic process, not just us looking at it and deciding, wow, we should do this street. So, it comes out of that program, and Lucity will be leading, you know, the charge there for us. Takes a lot of background work in it also, but it's coming together.
I had a chance to see it yesterday in a kind of extensive review, because that's something I've been particularly concerned about. And there's a vast amount of data that had to be almost managed by the seat of the pants before. So, having that data in a robust software program that can prioritize and direct where the best bang for the buck, so to speak, in our revenue for those street improvements is going to be a big improvement. And I think the community at large is going to see a continuing overall improvement in our streets and roads. I think there was a lot of inadequate commitment in the past that caused us to really get behind. So, being able to not only catch up and get us to where we need to be, but then improving in the future is something I think we can expect to see. And I, again, commend you guys for that.
Thank you. And with that, then, where are we going next? What are we going to tear up next?
Segway.
So, the next project that we're going to see, you know, impacts is going to be Summit McCormick Beach and Goodwin Improvements. We have a public meeting scheduled for September 5th. So, that's next Thursday. And notices and/or flyers, invitations are being sent out for that. So, we will be working very closely with business owners, property owners around that area to coordinate that project throughout the construction. Another one that's out to bid is the Airport Trunk Main, Phase 2B. We opened bids on Thursday for that. We expect that's going to be in the $10 million range. So, that is several miles of very large sewer pipe coming from the airport, Trima Plant South. So, that will be coming up real soon on a meeting. So that will be coming up real soon on a, on a meeting. Then Penn Avenue Eastwood, utility relocations are underway there right now. APS is doing work and then Unisource will move in there. Hope Street Improvements also have Unisource relocations there. They're telling us that they're scheduled for September. And then Corsair Extension, we plan on being out to bid in October for that, for that new connectivity out there. And then Chino Valley and Intermediate Pump Stations is progressing well in design, and we expect that we will bring GMPs, Guaranteed Maximum Price, presentations to you before the end of the calendar year.
Is that everything?
With that, if you have any other questions.
Corsair, Craig, I think you mentioned to me, you're going to do some work down on Larry Caldwell to the south from Corsair, right?
Correct. Corsair will create a new roundabout connection next to like the golf course maintenance yard, and that will run to the east and then north, connect into Corsair. And yes, then the condition of the existing Wilkinson Drive from there back to Larry Caldwell is very poor, and we will be doing rehabilitation project in conjunction with the Corsair project.
Is Wilkinson that north-south piece there?
Yes.
Okay, it turns in, you know, Prescott, you could be on one street and it changes names like five times.
Yep.
Okay, well, that'll be helpful. As you know, you and I talked about the condition of that road, and we're going to have a lot more traffic, we hope, out in that commercial area. Councilman Good.
Yeah, I just wanted to also mention the fact that sometimes our streets programs and construction schedule is at the mercy of the franchise agreement we have with Unisource. A lot of people don't realize, but when we either know or discover gas lines in those construction projects, we have to wait for Unisource to come out and do their part of it. And we have a soon-to-expire 20-year franchise agreement with Unisource that really has no substantial performance clauses in it. So we're at, just at their decision when they decide what's a reasonable period of time to leave a project, and then it's postponed until they come back and get that, their part of the job done. So I just want to make sure that the public understands it's not our city crew that just decides to start something and stop it. Sometimes we're at, like I said, the mercy of Unisource. So we hope to renegotiate that franchise agreement and put some performance standards in there so that doesn't happen in the future. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments from the council? Public comment?
Fred Oswalt.
Just a reminder, you've got three minutes and just get through your comments. If you have questions, we'll try to gather all those up at the very end. Thank you.
Well, thank you. As a former bicycle commuter and bicycling safety instructor, I am very concerned about the numerous hazards in the bicycle facilities in Prescott. And the worst are steep, roads with steep downhill runs with bike lanes such as Prescott Lakes Parkway going towards 89 and Rossar Street towards 89. And maybe the most significant is Willow Creek Road because it has a lot of cross streets with intersections. And it is not appropriate to put people on the far right of the road as they reach an intersection because that stripe tells motorists to stay left, and if they're making a right turn, then they make what we call a right hook, which is very dangerous. And Gale Gardner is an inappropriate place for bike lanes because of all the traffic into the shopping center, but those have been restored. There needs to be some consciousness of safety. And then finally, they have a new traffic light at the end of Prescott Lakes Parkway at Willow Lake. I have not seen any indication of marking to guide cyclists where to stop, where to put their wheels to trigger the light. And as a rhetorical question, how can you expect people to respect traffic laws if you don't bother to make traffic lights work? And that is a big failing of this city. I would urge the bicycling committee to look into safety issues much more seriously. Thank you.
Thank you. Marine?
That's it.
Okay. Mayor Protem?
Yes, I would just like to respond to that because the Bicycle Pedestrian Traffic Committee has definitely looked at each of these issues, Rossar, Prescott Lakes Parkway, Willow Creek Road, Gale Gardner, and they felt that, that keeping those bike lanes were more safe, were safer than just having bikes take, take the road. So we've certainly entertained this idea quite a bit. We've talked about it a lot. So I just wanted to make that comment for the bicycle.
Very good, thank you. Craig, anything else you want to address?
That takes care of us on this one.
All right.
I have one thing real quick.
Yes.
Because I've studied it in college and other times, the bicycle facilities here are poor, no, they're pathetic. And I think we should be more concerned, maybe you can take it, Craig, to, I don't know whoever it might be, but instead of there being a bicycle lane like going down Willow Creek Road, to pull that curb line out to the bicycle line and make it a multipurpose access on that far side. So you have separation between bicycle and surface. I think that makes a difference. If you go to different communities, Austin and other places, they have moved their curb light out and made that section a sidewalk instead of four foot, they've made it six to eight foot, and then striped it as multipurpose. And then that, you have, you have a sidewalk on the other side that pedestrians can use. So we need to look at doing some of those things, especially on some of those steep slopes because it makes sense.
Any other questions, comments from the council?
Well, it was a great presentation. Craig, I don't think I need to go back over just how excited and thankful we are for your leadership, but you've done a great job. You have a great team, and you can let Eric Bay know that he's been dethroned. So you are now my favorite guy in Public Works.
Thank you.
We'll move on to item 3B.
Presentation to review water code and policy changes.
Today was initially scheduled for review of the policy and code changes in their entirety. Based on input from the council at the last meeting, we decided to make this a review of the public comments we've received so far, and then push that review back about a month, along with adoption sometime early October, late October, somewhere up there. So, so far, we've received six comments from the public on all of our water changes. Two of those were from the same person. The Citizens Water Advocacy Group submitted one document as a comment that had several within it. The comments from everybody can be described more or less as positive, with obviously questions about some of the larger issues such as water outside of city limits, the sewer issues, sort of those larger things. But the, the day-to-day policy changes, use of the worm, we received no comments on those. Today, we'll just be describing some of those comments sort of in general, offering answers to those, offering comments on those. A full document with all of the questions, along with responses, can be found on our website in the not-too-distant future. So with regard to those additional public input, we've scheduled four public meetings. These will be held more as open houses for the public to come and discuss our changes with our water professionals. We'll have representatives from the community development, from Public Works, from the legal departments at each of these meetings, and we'll have a chance to speak with the public, answer any questions, explain things when things are confusing, as I'm sure they are. You'll see that we have two, noon to 1:30, two in the afternoon, and then two in the evening as well. They'll be held in different spots all over Prescott so that we can kind of accommodate people's schedules and get closer to where different people live here in town. As always, we do welcome public input. We want people to come to those public meetings. We want people to submit comments, they still can and should, at our website or through email or directly to us through snail mail, I guess. With regard to the comments, our first comment involves sort of safe yield, the AMA, and regional cooperation. One of the main ones was simply, how will these policy changes help us reach safe yield? Obviously, safe yield is the equilibrium between what we withdraw from the ground and what we put back, and not just what we put back, but also what nature puts back. So there's, there's a lot of recharge, there's a lot of withdrawal. And our, these proposed policy changes and code changes should help us in a number of ways.
Can you expand the definition of the word "we"?
Sure.
"We" doesn't just the city of Prescott. "We" is the AMA.
"We" in this context is the city of Prescott.
Well, we can only adjust what we do. What we can't do is be accountable for everybody else who's accountable for safe yield. All we can do is respond to what the city of Prescott does.
Absolutely true.
Okay, so every time we talk about what we do, what that infers is that we, citizens of Prescott, adopt the sole responsibility of the AMA, and that's not the case here.
That's correct, and, and that's not the intention of these changes, to take over the AMA. The intention is to get our house in order as much as we can, to be an example for the rest of the AMA as to how a responsible and effective water policy and water management system can work. So in order to help the AMA get there, we're doing things like trying to increase the amount of recharge through increased sewer, through decreasing lost water through our system. We want to decrease the amount of water that's going out in the first instance by trying to conserve water through our new conservation policies, through our new landscaping policies. And we really want to know more information. We want to have more data because from that data, we can determine what we need to do next.
And our position as the only assured water provider in the AMA, we use as a leverage in negotiations when we use water outside of the city limits with regards to them being compliant with what we need them to be compliant to?
Absolutely.
Right, I just want to make that public from the standpoint, you know, being criticized for trying to control what we can control with the use of the citizens of Prescott's water as an asset. We can use that, we can leverage that asset differently than just giving it outside of the city of Prescott. We can use that to bring some of the people that are outside of the city of Prescott that are causing the city of Prescott an issue with safe yield. We can bring them into more of a compliant structure.
That's true. That's very true. And with, I guess, working with those people outside of the city limits does get into regional cooperation. But as we fully implement the, the Water Resources Management Model, the worm, we can look at individual accounts and see when there are particular water users of one type that are using a lot more water than others of the same type. And we can speak to them. We can go to them and say, hey, we have incentives to help you change your practices and maybe even save you money. So ultimately, we want to do everything we can within the city to make sure that our house is in good shape. Then we also want to go outside of the city, speak with our neighbors. Now, I know that city leadership has made a number of commitments to speak with our larger regional partners, to work on water conservation, to work on safe yield, and those things that are ongoing, they're just not part of what the city's water management practices are. Those are sort of separate from that. In addition to that, regional cooperation also includes those 13,000 unregulated wells. Those are all people that are part of our regulation, are part of our region, and part of the AMA. So to the extent that we can work with cooperation with those, to send water to them, to get the recharge back, that's really regional cooperation that's at their heart. It's us using our resources to help the AMA as a whole, and that's one of the main ways we can do that. So those are the things we'll be doing for, for regional cooperation. We also continue as a member of the Groundwater Users Advisory Council. We're active on that board, and we are part of the development of the next management plan for the AMA. It's supposed to go through 2025 with safe yield as the ultimate goal in 2025.
Okay, so one of the, the policy, proposed policy changes we had was directly related to water connection policy. So from that, we've received quite a few questions. So we have pulled out a number of questions from each of kind of the topic areas, and we'll go through the questions and then information, answers that go with that, and/or additional information to go along with those. Ultimately, we have compiled all questions that have come in into one master sheet, and that is being worked on in order to supply answers, all the information that we can with those, and that will be posted on the website as, as well with, with everything else that we already have up there. So first question associated with water connection is, "The proposed policy seems fragmented. What are the problems we are hoping to solve?" So some of the information we have to go with that is, "The proposed water management policy and accompanying city code changes were developed comprehensively with the goal of reaching safe yield, improving surface water quality, and simplifying internal processes and procedures. Also, the water management policy is being revised to be used as a tool by both staff and property owners, as a guide to processes and procedures for acquiring approval of water resources from the city." And then many of the topics previously stated in the policy are now being integrated into city code. So that's where the simplification comes into play. Right now, we have an extensive policy, and we are looking at taking those, those pieces and bring them in into city code instead of just being in the water policy. And then ultimately, red lines to the city code proposed changes are all listed on the website and are available there to review. Next combined question is, "How is water being allocated now for commercial uses? What happened to the .10 acre feet?" So in years past, there was, for each individual residential unit that was being connected to the system, it was being allocated .35 acre feet. That included .25 acre feet for the residential unit and .1 acre feet to cover supplemental commercial items that come along with, with residential units and population. So right now, we're contemplating that, that there will not be the allocations. The allocations ultimately, they over-allocated the water, so it, it kind of locked it up and showed that there was all this demand where it truly isn't there. Now with the worm, the Water Resource Management Model, the worm then ultimately, water use for commercial projects will initially be estimated based upon actual water use by other comparable businesses within the city. So we have every single water account in the worm, and we are able to look at historical usages for every residential account, every commercial account. We know and have the ability to look at what is truly used. So then that, that will be used to help there. After three years of actual water billing data, the use can be determined for long-term planning. So initially, we'll use like-business types in order to estimate the water that, that new business would need. And long-term, after we have three years of that, that history, then that will be used directly in it for, for that usage. Next question was, "How will city, how will the city determine market value of water?" So ultimately, the determination of the price of water is one that will be determined by the market. And the city will employ a consultant to assist with determination of a marketable price when needed. And last one on this topic, "The cost to build water and/or sewer is not reasonable unless a large portion agree to hook up." Definitely, this, this is one of the items on the sewer side that we identified is, is very challenging, that we have to look at quite a bit more. So this is part of the research and discussion that will transpire over the next year regarding system expansions. A cost-benefit analysis would only be used to determine the costs and benefits to the city for the proposed project. And ultimately, property owners would be required to connect to city water and/or sewer according to the rules outlined in city code. And those will be reviewed, discussed, worked over extensively over the next, next year. Next topic. Does it go to me? Okay. Okay, the next topic was, was in sewer. Okay, the next topic was in sewer. So the first question is, "How will the city possibly be able to return, monitor return flows, or prove 50% is being sent to the water reclamation facility? Should it be 70%?" So again, with the WORM, the Water Resource Management Model, so it tracks actual individual water use through utility billing records. So again, we will have all of the water usage. Then the city also tracks wastewater flows coming into the water reclamation facility. Also, Prop 400 requires that the wastewater flows be measured and recorded for non-recoverable storage, and will support the comparison of water use versus return to the wastewater stream. And commercial and industrial development have a requirement through the pre-treatment code for a measuring and sampling location to be installed on the sewer service from the building. So in regards to commercial-industrial, then we have that ability to put in flow monitor if we needed to, and then through the Prop 400, individual subdivisions, for instance, Granite Dells Estates, we have a wastewater metering device on the sewer system measuring all the flow that is being returned directly from that subdivision to abide by the Proposition 400 requirements. So then we again can go into WORM, we can do Polygon for that area, pull in all the water usage, and compare that with that sewer meter. So that's another ability there. Through the data collected by these methods, the city will be able to determine the rate of return, and the WORM can assist the city in identifying high-water users. So then conservation staff are then able to assist those users in evaluating water use to look for conservation opportunities, as well as the adoption of the 2012, and most recently, 2018 International Building Code, has made an impact on the installation of plumbing fixtures that meet or exceed the water conservation measures adopted by council. So at this time, the city is meeting higher than a 50% return flow rate, or actually in about 60% return flow rate in there, so that is what's being considered, the 50% is being considered with the proposed policy. Next question, "Have you considered any other alternatives to requiring connection to sewer?" And then, little unsure, it then had alternatives to septic systems. So one of the primary goals of converting septic users to sewer is the return of wastewater flows to the recharge facility to aid in reaching safe yield. Every septic system that's out there, industry considers that possibly 10% would get returned to recharge is all from that. Alternative systems then will not increase effluent recharge into the aquifer and are therefore not being considered as part of the new policy or code changes. And definitely with the rock conditions and failing septic systems in Prescott, then ultimately, property owners are required to put in an alternative system. Alternative systems even have less of a return because they're more about evaporation-transpiration. That water is brought closer to the surface, and plant growth is being used and/or evaporation in order to dissipate that water. So then that's even less water that can go to recharge. Next question, "How will the city finance the installation of sewer in unsewered areas?" The city will be embarking on the development of a long-range plan to potentially convert existing sewer users to sewer. To assist with the overall goal of safe yield, the plan will include both positives and negatives of new sewer connections, focus on areas that can improve water quality in the creeks, and focus on funding sources as well as grant assistance opportunities. It may not be feasible for all septic users to convert to sewer. However, the development of a long-range plan will give the city information to make these decisions on where conversions to sewer is possible and/or feasible.
All right, so the next major topic was water outside of city limits. And the first and most common question we got was, "Why do this at all? Why are we even doing it?" And there's a couple of different reasons. The first obviously is to get the, those 13,000 exempt wells that are on septic tanks off of those wells, off of the septic tanks, onto a system that is reliable, that is safe, and can put water back into the aquifer. That'll be just water that's not lost forever and can help the AMA get towards safe yield. That goes towards that regional cooperation. Really, the bigger thing is, in order to have cooperation, you've got to have people that are willing to cooperate. And so far, the way that most of the municipalities in our AMA have treated water is as a contact sport. We're going to get it so no one else can, we're not going to help you with yours, and there's a lot of mistrust. There's a lot of hard feelings between municipalities and between the cities and people that are on wells. And in order to get away from that, someone's got to reach a handout. In this situation, it's the city. We have water, we can help those people, and we can help the AMA by trying to get some of those wells onto sewers, onto city water, to recharge the water. That's the goal. Other questions we have were, well, will the city taxpayers and the county taxpayers be paying for the infrastructure? The answer is no. The way this is set up, the property owners, the developers, they're the ones that put in all the infrastructure. The city just takes it over after the fact and continues to maintain it. So the city taxpayers won't have any costs for those infrastructures outside of city limits. Another question was, "Why not just annex everybody?" And it makes sense, that's our current policy, is when someone wants water, they're outside of the city, they need to annex in. With the goal of trying to get individual water users off of their wells and septics and onto the city system, we run into the problem with annexation, which is, you have to be contiguous to the city. So if you're in a neighborhood and you're not the house that's immediately next to the city, you want to get on the city water, you want to annex in, but your neighbor that is closest doesn't want to, you're kind of out of luck. And that goes for everybody past that person. So by not requiring annexation, we can capture a lot of those individual homes and neighborhoods that otherwise wouldn't be able to get on the city water and sewer systems, which would then increase the possibility for other homes in those neighborhoods to connect, because the infrastructure will be there. It will be kind of a domino effect to pick up more and more of those homes as more and more infrastructure is installed, something we wouldn't be able to do by requiring annexation. More questions we have, one was just, "Are we trying to get money by overcharging homeowners for water?" And if that's the goal, I can think of a lot better ways to make money off our water than extending infrastructure, maintaining infrastructure, and providing water to homeowners. It's just, it's not the most feasible plan to make money. The goal is to try to help the AMA by bringing those people onto a system that can recharge their water. We are also asked if this is just a scheme to get around Proposition 400, which requires permanent recharge of water for major annexations. The answer is no. Proposition 400 still exists. The goal for this policy is not for huge developments outside of city limits. Sort of the presumption is that those will still want to annex into the city for all of the other benefits that come along with city annexation. And Propositions 400 will still exist, that's still a thing. When we have large annexations, all of that water will be sent to permanent recharge. Last, we were asked if this outside-of-city-limits policy was developed as part of a deal with Arizona ECO. The answer to that is no. This is developed in order to help the AMA. A lot of people will be able to use it outside of city limits. Arizona ECO may be one of those, but this was developed entirely by city staff internally for the purpose of reaching out a hand to the rest of our AMA to help in the way that we can, which is with our water.
Next, we have conservation. The Citizens Water Abbot Sea Group suggested that we follow their SEWAG landscape policy. The city already has a robust conservation program. We already do our best to reduce outdoor watering, provide education, promote rainwater harvesting, and promote just minimal outdoor water use on new developments, and so at this time, we are not considering adopting SEWAG's policy as written, primarily because we already do a lot of what is on there. The city will also keep focusing on the ADWR Low Water Use Plant List. We talked about putting that into the LDC so that people have to follow it, and then if citizens would like to change it, they can approach the state themselves and get plants added or subtracted from that list, so it's kind of a living list that can be carried on. It has also been suggested that no new golf courses are permitted, and that existing golf courses minimize their water usage by reducing irrigated areas or by using artificial turf. No new golf courses have been permitted in over 20 years in the Prescott area, and I personally have not heard of any plans to do any additional ones at this time. We had a previous conservation employee who was very dedicated to going to golf courses, and we actually got a lot of irrigated turf already removed from our local golf courses through that, but this is on our radar. We do plan on discussing further golf course changes or approaching the golf courses in the future if necessary. Another one that was not necessarily mentioned is HOAs. A lot of HOAs have some underutilized turf still, and so that's a target that I've also been doing to get rid of that underutilized turf that no one really uses, that is just a high-water usage. There was also a suggestion that HOAs cannot ban or limit rainwater harvesting. Again, that's up to the HOA, it's not really something we can control. I have reached out to HomeCo and many of the HOAs to discuss this with them and to try to get our rebate program used. So this is something that the city is already actively working on and will continue. And the last one I have is, there was a suggestion to add hot water recirculation systems to the rebate program. If you recall, in July, we discussed this a few different times with a few different people. I cannot find scientific proof that the water savings does not match with the energy increase, and so at this time, you chose to not add it to the rebate program. We were not planning on reevaluating that for at least a couple of years, and that's all I have on conservation.
So if anyone submitted a comment and we did not address it, or did not address your favorite comment, as we said, all of the comments, all of the questions, both in writing that were submitted to us and asked here at the podium during study sessions, are included on a single document that will be up on our website, hopefully by the end of the week. We always like to end on a high note, which is with a big chart with numbers on it, and these are the upcoming public meetings. Once again, we encourage the public to come. We would love to discuss these issues and try to dispel whatever myths or rumors, or just provide additional information.
Very good. Thanks for that presentation. Councilman Blair.
Two things real quick. On the conservation side, is it possible that you might be able to get some reduction in numbers from the public school district since they took out their turf?
Yes, so when it was first, are you talking about Prescott High School?
Correct. I just want to be able to put my arms around, because there's not water being used on that football field, how many or how much water is saved?
I don't have that number off the top of my head, but the second I saw it appear in the paper, I emailed them a conservation form. They are currently in process of doing it, and so once they close up that project, they will be submitting that form, and then under special city manager approval, we can give them an increased rebate, and so you'll be seeing that.
Can we find out, let's just say, go back since they pulled the turf, and look at those months' water usage and see how much it's dropped? And the reason why I'm bringing that up is through the school district, after we figure out how much the school district saved in money by not watering that turf, to look at not only Granite Mountain as well as Mile High Middle School, and reducing the turf on the sides to where the football team stands, still leaving a grasp, but where the goalposts are and everything else, taking out the end sections of the turf, and maybe reducing that by half on both of those would give us another savings of what you're looking at at the high school. So I think that would be important for the public to know. Second thing is, I brought up at the last meeting, when we talked about sewored and unsewored and watered areas, and again, go back to making sure that we don't close people out of wanting to develop their property by having water but not having sewer. I think that's important, that as long in the state of Arizona that septic systems and alternative systems are legally allowed and people own property, we should be bound by the fact of looking at those cases individually and not having a blanket policy that discourages not only the price of that property, but discourages them from using their property.
I guess I should have said that questions and comments from the council were not included in that statement, so I can address that now, that we have an exemption drafted that would allow the council to exempt properties from the sewer requirement when appropriate.
Thank you. I think it's important that that happens, and then it's written that at any given time when sewer is available, they have to hook up.
Councilman Sishka?
Thank you. Couple things. When we were talking about why don't we annex these areas? Well, from my standpoint, it works out great for the city not to annex these areas. We get the water back, we're giving them water in a good, clean system, we're getting the water back to recharge, permanent recharge, and we don't have to provide police and fire. We don't have to provide roads with sidewalks. We don't have to do a lot that we would have to do if, in fact, they annexed, and basically the developer, whoever that was, would have to pay for the infrastructure.
Councilman Sishka, I think that's an excellent point, and practically speaking, to aid the AMA reach safe yield with an-annexing all the lands we're talking about is cost prohibitive. We can't provide the public services in these hinterlands other than water and wastewater. So if we're really trying to be a regional cooperator, this is the way to do it in terms of water.
I totally agree. Thank you. Another thing is like septics, I know that we have septics up in some areas of the city, in fact, a lot more than I ever thought. So if, in fact, we can't basically tell these folks, you know, you need to spend thousands of dollars in order to hook up to our system, aren't we dealing with a situation where we're giving them the opportunity to have rebates for having really efficient toilets, really efficient washers, things like that?
Yes, we added an additional $50 incentive for washing machines and toilets on our current program, so you can apply for it right now if you have a septic system. So you just have to note on the form if you are a septic user.
So what we're saying is, is that that would be from a water consumption standpoint. You know, they would consume less water with these efficient toilets and washing machines, things like that.
Yes, absolutely. And then that can ultimately reduce their water use and the water that goes to the septic system.
So we're not saying to them, "You got to spend $15,000 or $20,000 to hook up to us."
That will be our, you know, next year-long discussions and review to figure out how there can be equitable ways to manage more connections to the system, but we've got a long ways to go before we get there.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Brodeur?
Thank you, Mayor. After our SEWAG forum that we had, there were several people in the audience that were very positive about this, about the idea that they might be able to hook up to the city sewer, and I think, Craig, you followed up on a couple of them for me that they wanted the exact address. So I do think there's a lot of positive things about this, but I want to thank you for extending the opportunities for the public meetings, and I think that these would be a really nice format for people to get their questions answered and maybe even look specifically at their address and so that you can address that. So I thank you for that. I think it extends it for about another month, and hopefully, we can get the word out and we'll get more input from folks.
Councilman Chol?
Thanks, Mayor. Kind of going off of what Billy said, I want to thank you guys for organizing these meetings. I think it's really helpful and encouraging to let people be more a part of the process, and I think it makes the information more digestible, especially answering each person's specific comments and their specific questions. I think will really hopefully ease some people and make this information much more understandable moving forward.
Other questions, comments from the council? All right, move to public comment. You have three minutes. Go ahead and spill all your beans in three minutes, and we'll try to get to any questions that come up at the very end. Thank you.
Leslie Hoi?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'd like to thank you for some things, but there isn't time in the three minutes, so just consider yourself thanked for the things that are good and not so thanked for the things that are not so good, which unfortunately, there are quite a few of them. One of them is, the council memo stated that this was going to be a time tip for the council people to get their questions answered during the process, therefore, no one from SEWAG was able to prepare for this meeting. Therefore, no one from CWAG was able to prepare for this meeting, and so I'll do the best I can, but I don't have any approval of the CWAG board. I'd like to tell the public that the comments that CWAG submitted, there's seven pages of them, are posted on our website at Cwagaz.org. Many, many people in our committees and our board worked really hard on these comments, so they were carefully researched. I hope when you come to the public meetings that you will use some slides with bullet points, because it's really impossible to take down what's being said today. I doubt that any of you could repeat it back, and so I certainly can't. One question I would really like answered more clearly is about the .1 acre-feet for commercial, which was my question that I've been trying to get answered since January at various meetings, and it's never been adequately answered. So now I understand that there will be a research period. However, the city did research previously on this. And what I'd like to know today, if you're going to answer any questions, is what you're going to do about allocating water in the interim three years, because a lot of houses are being built and they're being allocated water, and there's no consideration of the commercial support services like healthcare, police, people in offices, et cetera, et cetera. One thing that you did not answer is a big thing on CWAG's mind is the possibly illegal allocation of the groundwater allowance to new development. You have that information in our comments. I don't have time, unfortunately, to read the page, but the public can certainly go and see our concerns about it. We have written a letter and sent it to ADWR, and we heard back from ADWR, and they said that the director, Mr. Bucowski, would be addressing our question when he returns. He's out of the office. Boy. Okay, well, I guess I'm done, and I just can't tell you personally, after committing 17 years of my life to helping reach a sustainable water future, how horribly disappointing it is to have a lot of obfuscation handed to us. I'm so disappointed. I love this city. I've worked really hard for this, and I just can't tell you how disappointed I am. Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie.
Gordon Bond?
Gordon Bond, live out by the airport still. A couple of positive comments based on today. First of all, thanks for chipping ceiling our community. I'm on our HOA board, so thank you. We appreciate that. Secondly, I appreciate the opportunity for our HOA situation, the way we're structured with water and so forth, to be able to work out a way for conservation incentives to be available to the 128 units, homeowners, I should say, that are in our community. Now, a couple of questions. The first is simply, I found the explanations that were provided today to be generalities, just generalities. I personally like to see quantification. If you're talking about units, of so many units being available to hook up, are we looking at 100, 1,000, 10,000? Are those 12,000 or 13,000 people on sewer close by? I thought they were spread around the county. Specifically, what is the overall impact of these measures that you're looking at in numbers, not just generalities of, oh, that'll help safe yield and so forth? Secondly, from what I have read about this whole question of the designation of groundwater that has been identified, I read the CWAG presentation, and it is an area of enormous concern. There may be total confusion here. Maybe we have a different interpretation of things, but the idea that the city can take part of that designation of 9,500 acre-feet per year that was initially set up for those 32,000 platted lots in January of 99 and use that and just say, no, no, we're going to use it for other development. That is absolutely unacceptable. So if I'm misinterpreting that, or as I say, if the folks at CWAG are misinterpreting that, we sure like to get some clarification. This is a biggie. This is a biggie. We're talking about thousands of acres feet per year that seem to have some confusion surrounding it. So possibly you could include that in a statement on the website as to make sure that we understand exactly what your position is from the legal standpoint and from the policy standpoint. Thank you.
Thank you, Gordon.
Howard Mechanic?
Mr. Mayor, I first like to thank you for making the commitment that I understand you've made to get the communities together in the AMA and try to develop a plan to reach safe yield, and hopefully the council will support you in that effort, and I believe they will, and I believe the public will. And I'd like to see a resolution to that effect so we can have a short public discussion, have the council discuss it, make it clear to the AMA, the whole council, and the whole city of Prescott is behind that. Now, I have two questions. One is when we're talking about the 50% return requirement for commercial, and I wanted to clarify that if a commercial venture comes to the city and they have something that's going to return only 40%, we're going to say no. But they may have different components to a plan, and we can say, what's the return on this part of your project? What's the return on this? Maybe have another business that we can sever from your proposal. So I would like to see it clearly defined, and I brought this up to Clyde before, that the individual components should return over 50%. If there's one component that they're proposing that's going to return 30%, even if they're over 50% for the whole project, I think we should analyze that one that says, we're going to return 30%, and we say, no, that component's not acceptable, even though your project is over 50%. The other point is as far as the plants list, I wanted to clarify, my reading of it is that the plants list is only required for commercial and multifamily. Individuals can plant whatever they want on a single-family homes. I wanted to clarify that because I thought I heard something different. And since I do have a minute, if I could respond to that answer, because I may have a comment about it, Mr. Mayor, if that's okay with you.
Just use your three minutes, and then we'll move on.
Okay, I'm finished.
Okay. Thanks, Howard.
Mayor, that was the last speaker card.
Okay. So with those comments, questions, Clyde or others, do you have any clarity you want to bring at this point?
With regard to having slides with bullet points at these presentations, we will not be doing that. These aren't being set up as presentations. I'm very sorry to hear that anyone believes we are obfuscating anything or trying to hide anything from the public. We will all be present at these meetings. We'll be happy to speak with anyone, answer any questions that they have. That's what these are there for. We're there to answer questions. With regard to the commercial and I guess even for residential allocation of water, the worm allows us to do it differently than we've done in the past. We don't have to say each house gets .14, .17, or .35, and each commercial, we're just going to assume it falls under this catch-all and not worry about it ever again. We get to actually look at what businesses and what houses are using. So when there's an infill house within a neighborhood, we can assign it an amount of water based on its neighbors, how its neighbors use water. We can review that over five years, and then we'll know that that's how it's going to use water in the future, and that just becomes part of our portfolio. We don't have to continue to reserve water for it in any amount because we know what it's using. The same goes for commercial projects. We can look at other similar projects around town, reserve amount of water that's sort of an average of those, and after three years, after five years, then we'll know what it's actually using. We can remove that reservation and just keep on keeping on with what it's actually using. So the Water Resources Management Model really allows us to track our water, to allocate our water, to use our water in a much more advanced way. We don't have to just send out water and assume it's gone forever. We get to base people's water use on what their actual water use is. With regard to Mr. Bond's question in telling how many units we'll be hooking up if we send water outside of city limits, or how many units we'll be hooking up if we set up sewer, the answer is we don't know. We don't know how many people are going to use these programs that we've set up. When they come through, when someone applies, it'll still be coming to council, it'll still be up for public review and comment, and that's the time that each one of those projects would be reviewed to determine what kind of impact it's going to have on the city. Those are all discretionary. So if the city decides it's not in our best interest to do it, we can still not do it. This isn't mandatory. No one is getting a property right in our water that's outside of city limits. It all remains discretionary and up for public review when each individual project comes into the city. I can tell you for the 50% return for commercial, really for any projects, that's something we'll have to look at more. Mr. Mechanic spoke with me about that some time ago. We've been kind of reviewing it to see if it's feasible for us to review individual components of projects and then make a call on the whole project based on one part. That's something we'll have to discuss in the future.
Well, and to follow up on that, that's going to be a policy decision that you guys make. I mean, if there's elements and we can get down to a component and you don't want to do it, then that's something you could put in the policy. Did you want to talk about the groundwater? I mean, how about I just say, so it's not a legal matter. We have talked to ADWR, and we have been told in no uncertain terms that the groundwater allocation can go beyond the lots that were set aside in 1998. That's what ADWR has told us. Is that correct, Clyde?
Yes, and it's also legally correct. The question for you is, how do you want to do, how do you want to use it? Do you want to use it in the same way we've done it? Restrict it to lots? Do you want to open it up and use it for other things? It's not for me to decide that. It's for you all to decide that based on public comment.
Councilman Blair?
I don't think there's any discrepancy whatsoever. We have a designation by ADWR that gives us an opportunity to use 16,507 acre-feet of water a year. I believe if I'm not wrong, last year we used 6,000-plus acre-feet, 6,700 acre-feet. So when you want to start talking about what that means for total build-out of the population or through the city or annexing people in, for people to assume that we don't have enough water based upon a 100-year water certificate, we do. It's written in state law, and it's been determined. So I don't think there's any discrepancy or uneasiness about what we are doing as far as a water policy up here.
Well, I think to add to that, Councilman, I thought Herb Dishlip did a great job kind of, you know, looking out in the future to build out, to your point, and that would be a great reference. You know, if you want something that's kind of quantifiable, it is something we can review every time it's going to come to the council, yet we know that with that 16,500 acre-feet for build-out of Prescott, whenever that might be, years and years from now, you're probably still not going to use a 16,500, and that's just with the current technology that we have on conservation today.
If we double our population, we're still looking at 14,000 acre-feet of water if we double it over the next 50 or 60 years. And if we go outside and allow people to do the right thing where we give them water and maybe take them off the sewer, makes sense, and we're not taking water away from anybody, the supreme 1998 plat in the city of Prescott, that's just nonsense.
Councilman Good?
Well, I'm glad that we're slowing down a bit on this new proposed policy. Establishing a goal of safe yield and improving water quality are both laudable goals. But in my professional career, working with department heads who would come forward and present a proposal and a goal, we would clarify those things to be sure that they were achievable, they were measurable, and they were monitored as we approached the intended result. I don't see any of that here. We're just saying we want to try to reach safe yield. So how do we do that? How can we quantify a goal, establish it, and measure the progress we're making towards that? I think that's essential to put together a legitimate policy that the community at large will have confidence in. Having these public meetings, I think, is important so that the public can ask their own questions, get detailed answers. I mean, this proposal that this presentation we just got, this is so vague. How can you possibly prepare questions related to the presentation that you're giving when we have topic four, water outside the city limits? It needs to be much more detailed. Personally, for me, I always ask for these as soon as I can get them, a couple of days in advance, so I can analyze what is going to be presented and generate legitimate questions that I can have during the presentation and not expect to just have an instant epiphany of good questions that will help me clarify whether I can support it or not. So that needs to be done better. So I hope that we can come up with some legitimate goals, legitimate measurement criteria, and for us to say, well, the only cost benefit we're going to do is what will be the cost and benefit for the city when we aren't going to, at least from what was just said, do that for the individuals that might be impacted, I think is unacceptable. I can't see governments stepping in and saying, you, Mr. Septic User, have to do this. We don't know what it's going to cost. You'll find out, and it might be 12,000 or 15,000 or $20,000. We don't know. That's up to you. That's unacceptable. We have to be able to go to a septic user and either say, your septic is failing, you're damaging this water quality to the city, you're obligated to connect to our sewer system so we can make sure that your effluent is recovered and the water quality isn't degraded. But if we have somebody who's got a brand-new septic system, it's working perfectly, it's on a flat slope with no drainage that is even at risk if it weren't working, and for government to come in and impose that kind of a stipulation on them at their own cost, I think is just an egregious overreach of government. So I need to see a much better justification. So when I hear from that resident, and I'm sure I will, that I've got really good justification for adopting a policy like this. Thank you.
Councilman Sishka?
You know, for years, people have been beaten on Prescott because we're the low-hanging fruit, and we were the 5,000-pound gorilla in the room, but that's not the case anymore. With Prescott Valley growing 500% since 1990 and Chino Valley growing 300%, with there being 13,000 exempt wells, I don't know how anybody could expect Prescott to save the AMA. You know, Councilman, you talked about we don't have any figures. That's what this worm is giving us, is the worm is going to give us figures. And I think that we need to move from an antiquated system to what we're doing right now. Do we want, as a community, as an area, straws in the ground and septics returning 10% of the water to the aquifer? Or do we want clean water? And I have to be honest with you, going out to Granite Dell's Estates for some of these meet-and-greets and Walden Farms, the new developments, they got a few plants and a lot of rocks. So I would imagine that they're going to be recharging or returning a whole lot more than what a normal Prescott, you know, an older Prescott house would return. You know, I would say probably in the 80% to 90% is what's going to be returned because that's their water use. It's all inside. It's not outside. With new outside-of-Prescott development that is not annexed, they still have to -- With new outside-of-Prescott development that is not annexed, they still have to achieve our watering standards, right? Our outdoor watering standards?
That's what we're proposing, correct.
So Prescott is driving the issue. Mayor Mangarelli is getting these people together. And we're going to work with them, our fellow cities and towns, to try and achieve something that looks like safe yield. But for, to expect Prescott to accept, to develop and maintain safe yield for this entire area is crazy. And so we're going to do what we can do. We're going to give the example to our other communities, right? I just got to shake my head about some of the comments about this thing. I think we've been very forthright as far as what we're doing.
Councilman Lamerson?
Thank you, Mayor. Simply because we can doesn't mean we have to. You know, we were mandated by the state of Arizona to try and reach, remember what I said, try and reach, safe yield by a given date with no specified penalties if we did or if we didn't. It was a stated goal. It was an objective to try and achieve. Now, understanding that, similar to Mr. Siski down here, the city of Prescott is not accountable for the entire AMA. We're accountable for what the city of Prescott does. However, because of the state's measuring stick, that nobody in the AMA is in safe yield, if anybody in the AMA is out of safe yield. So while we may be able to obtain putting in as much water as we take out as a city, if Prescott Valley doesn't do the same, we're in the same bucket. Chino Valley doesn't do the same, we're in the same bucket. Yavapai County doesn't do the same, we're in the same bucket. But at the end of the day, as leaders in the area, our job is to try and figure out how to best manage the water assets of the citizens of Prescott. And if using the water assets includes going outside of the city to bring in some of that water that people are using outside of the city, back into the city through putting them on city sewer, city water, et cetera, the trade-off is what? And what does the city stand to gain for the trade-off? Now, we have a stated objective to try and maintain in the general plan, I keep going back to the general plan, of a growth strategy of about 1.5% to 2% a year. That's an admirable goal, and we're doing that. And we've maintained that for a long time. Now, at the end of the day, there's ways to do that. It doesn't necessarily mean to bring everybody from Yavapai County into the city of Prescott. Does it mean to work with people in Yavapai County in order to make sure everybody here has quality water and quality services? Sure, it does. We're all parts of the same community. We're all Yavapai County and we're all part of Prescott. You know, we're the, I don't know, first territorial capital in the state of Arizona. This is where it all began, and this is where it all starts, and this is where we take the leadership role. And Clyde, you guys are doing a good job. I commend you for bringing some of these things forward. But remember, we have to do what's in the best interest of the citizens of Prescott. And sometimes, when you're in exchanging and you're bartering and you're in negotiations, there's give and there's take. That's the best I can offer at this point.
All right. Well, thanks for the comments. Thanks for the public comment. I think it underscores the reason for the statement, whiskey is for drinking, waters for fighting. I will renew my commitment here, as Councilman Siski pointed out and Mr. Mechanic, that we will get all the entities together here later this fall. My intention was, after this water policy was finalized, we'll see, I don't want to wait too, too long, but hopefully, that'll be the case somewhere in October or November. And appreciate the public's support on that. I agree with Councilman Siski, though. Many times, we're the target. I don't know exactly why, other than the fact that the AMA is called the Prescott AMA, but we're doing our darndest. And I think we're doing a really good job. It's been stated here many times that we work very hard with conservation and with recharge and all the things we do to make sure that we're putting more back in than we're taking out. And I think even to date this year, that is the case, that we've put more in, at least when you had numbers last time I talked to you, Craig, we had put more into the aquifer than we pumped out this particular year. So I appreciate the progress on this. This is not an easy project, guys, and I appreciate your hard work on it. I knew that when we started this, it would be at times somewhat controversial on some of these things. I think the septic hookup, the sewer hookup, is one of those things that for me, I need to kind of wrap my arms around a little bit more to try to figure out. While we have an intention to get as many people on our sewer as we can, we also have to really look at the affordability and what that looks like financially for each individual. I think we all know that, and we're going to try to figure that out and not force anybody to hook up to our sewer. So, well, I appreciate all the comments. Make sure you tell your friends and neighbors about all these meetings coming up so they can get out and get their voices heard. This meeting is adjourned.